It's appropriate.
Okay, so let me know when we.
We're on, sir.
Okay, good evening, everyone. Tonight, we are having a special meeting on August the 25th to discuss the Wireless Communication Devices Ordinance. But before we start with the meeting, I'd like to state the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. So I'd like to state that this evening, we do not have a quorum. So but however, we do want to, you know, discuss this ordinance that was prepared by Ian Myers, who was joining this meeting telephonically, or I'm sorry, Mike, joining the meeting telephonically. And then afterwards, we'll open the discussion to board members as well as to for public comment. And then if we could jointly make a conclusion on a recommendation, and then we'll finish out the meeting. So having said that, this ordinance that was presented to us this evening has been fully vetted by a number of boards, including the Citizen Communication Committee. It's been presented to the Planning Committee on at least one official basis. I know we reviewed it. I know a number of our members had some subsequent emails, questions for outside counsel. I know our representative, our legal representation for Radnor or the Planning Board has also made a number of comments as well. That is all incorporated within these ordinance that we believe is in a final state that we could actually opine on and, as I said, make a recommendation to the Board of Commissioners. So having said that, I'd like to open up the discussion to my fellow committee members to see if they have any questions, comments for counsel. I'm sorry? Do you have any?
Oh, I thought, Steve, did you have a comment you wanted to make?
So, yeah, I just, again, so for anybody who may be tuning in, this is must-see Wednesday night TV. We had an attorney-client privilege meeting, which included members of the Citizens' Communication Council, as well as the Planning Commission. That was the genesis for this draft. There's been input from both between that time and now. What, as the vice chair has noted, what is before the non-quorum group of the Planning Commission is that final product. There's been a few last-minute changes. So tonight, the Planning Commission, the members of the Planning Commission that are here are going to make an informal recommendation of some sort. That is not a formal recommendation, because we don't have a quorum. And for anybody listening who wishes to provide comment on this, they will have two opportunities at upcoming Board of Commissioners meetings. This red-line draft created by Mike Roberts of the Cohen Law Group is online. It is posted as part of the packet. So it's there for everyone to see. That is the culmination of a lot of hard work from our Planning Commission and our Citizens' Communication Council. So from the township staff, we thank them very much for all this work, as well as Mike Roberts. So I'll turn that over. And again, there is no official recommendation, one way or the other. It's more or less opinion at this point. And then we would close the meeting.
Okay. Well, thank you, Steve. So what I would like to do is to see if we have any comments from the members of the Commission and to address to Mike, and which we can discuss among the four of us. So who wants to? Lane, who wants to say?
Go ahead.
Okay, why don't you go ahead?
My comments are more general in nature. I mean, it's 24 pages. There's all sorts of boilerplate that favors us, and it has been tremendously enhanced over the last, I think, 10 to 12 days with responsive work by Mike fielding our comments, adding more muscle to our particular ordinance. Not being necessarily an expert in this field, I'm grateful that we have Mike's firm involved, because I feel that after 11 years on the board, this is a particularly broad and comprehensive way to address an issue by ordinance. And in the absence of any other comment, I would vote to recommend this to the Board of Commissioners as a template for going forward.
Okay, does anyone else? Well, before we move forward with your. Oh, okay. But we want to see if anyone else has any comments for Mike or to discuss among us.
So I just wanted to restate a summary of some of the edits that I had provided previously that still, you know, I would like to have reflected in the ordinance, including as to the application for each of the types of antennas that we're talking about, to have a specific requirement that the owner be identified clearly, as well as the applicant, that there be a requirement of notice to the township if that owner changes during the life of the equipment, whether by purchase, successor, and interest, or otherwise. Wherever there is a reference to maintenance or inspection reports or any other type of requirement that be undertaken, that it specify who is responsible for that, applicant or owner or both. As to the chart on subsection M of section 280-164, I had noted that in the first category of eligible facilities requests, that the 30 days from receipt of application also then include or supplemental application. And that the third column regarding the final decision be clarified as to what the time period would be referencing, if it is from the initial application or the supplemental application. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any addition?
I don't have anything further to add.
Okay. One question. I actually have two questions for counsel. One question is, what happens if there's any abandoned and/or antiquated equipment that was, that is owned by a company that is no longer around and/or bankrupt? What happens in that situation?
So that's a great question. Under the ordinance, it is required that obsoleted or abandoned equipment be removed. If a company goes bankrupt or otherwise, you know, goes belly-up in some fashion, we can seek to have them remove their equipment. But if the company doesn't exist, ultimately, that requirement is going to fall on the township at some point. If they would fail to respond to your requests or your notices that their equipment needs to be removed for a certain period of time, at that point, it would be incumbent upon the township to actually remove the equipment. Otherwise, you know, the owner would not be around to remove the equipment effectively. So there's a requirement for extant companies to remove any obsolete or abandoned equipment. But for companies that are bankrupt or otherwise don't exist, or have forfeited their assets in the right-of-way in some fashion, it's difficult for us to require them to do anything as they are an entity really that, you know, effectively doesn't exist at this point.
Is it possible, as part of the application process, that the applicant has to place some sort of form of a bond in this case? So should they go bankrupt or they go away, is it possible that, you know, we could fault, the township could fall back on proceeds of this bond?
Yeah, so we can require bonding for, in an amount effectively sufficient to guarantee the removal of the facility. And that will be something that the township could then drop on if the company were to, you know, effectively disappear at that point.
Okay, my other question, I have two more questions. My second question is with regard to privately-owned buildings, the commercial office buildings and having like numerous antennas on top of that roof. Does this, and does this ordinance kind of address the prevention from that occurring where you're going to have numerous, basically a bit of an eyesore type of accumulation of these antennas?
So those installations would fall under the non-tower wireless communication facilities provisions. There are requirements in there for design, for steffing, the installations be as minimally invasive as possible. But there's nothing in the ordinance now that would, you know, say, set a maximum on the number of facilities that can be placed on a specific building. That's something that we could include. From a design perspective, we have, as a general matter, a far greater degree of control over non-tower wireless communications facilities than we do over, say, a small wireless communications facility. But other than language relating to, if we look on pages 10 and 11, the design requirements for non-tower wireless communication facilities, they're required to be, you know, minimize the aesthetic impact, to utilize stealth technology to disguise the facilities, to blend in with the surrounding area with the architecture itself. All of that is a requirement. It could be used to deny future applications for, say, a second or a third or fourth or fifth on down-the-line antenna on a building. But there is no express requirement that relates to, say, the number of antennas or wireless communication facilities on a specific building. So if that's a concern that the township does have, it's something that I would surely put into a recommendation. We could pursue it forward.
Okay, and we still have, Steve, we still have the opportunity to have that inserted into this ordinance, right?
So what I would ask is if our special counsel include, and I think Mike's already doing it, include everything he heard tonight in this discussion, and that will be in the draft that goes to the Board of Commissioners.
Perfect. So my last question statement is with regard to some of the antennas, and I saw that this is going to go to the Design and Review Board, or I'm sorry, the applicant, once they submit their plans, would have to go to the Design and Review Board. I just want to make sure that there's no level of other advertising that could be mounted on some of these antennas. So it could be, you know, Bob's Tire Service on whatever antenna that's going to be mounted in the middle-of-the-way. So I just want to make sure that, you know, there is, you know, we have some sort of control over that, not only aesthetically, what the antenna's going to look like from a design, color as well, but anything else that could be associated with it or placed upon it as another source of revenue for, call it the owner who owns the real estate.
I apologize. I'm not sure that I understand the question fully.
So if you can imagine having an antenna that's placed on a roof or mounted anywhere, some of it's going to be very small in nature, some of it can be larger in nature. So for some of the larger nature stuff, you could actually, you may be able to place some advertising on the antenna itself. The name of my company, the name of your law firm, whatever, could be placed upon that. I would hope that we could, something like that, we could prevent this from happening, make sure that someone's not able to use this as a advertising post.
Absolutely. And that is in a requirement that is referred to as signs. It's actually under, for tower-based facilities, it is on page, excuse me, here, 18. And we can expand that to other facilities as well, where the only signage that is permitted to be placed on a tower-based facility in particular is emergency contact information and then any signage required by the FTC, which would effectively boil down to radio frequency warnings. We can expand that to apply to all wireless facilities, which would mean that no one can place any sort of signage on their facility outside of that that is expressly required by either the FCC or showing their emergency contact information. And we can expressly say advertising in there as well.
Okay.
I just wanted to point out that it's in there for towers expressly, and we can expand that to the other facilities.
Okay, perfect. And just going back to my first point earlier on about the abandoned equipment from a company that may be, that may go bankrupt. What happens currently right now if on a site you have some antiquated and/or abandoned equipment that includes cables, et cetera, that are unsightly? How would we be able to remove that? Ideally, it would be great if the applicant would remove some of the abandoned equipment relative at the, versus the cost for the township. Is there a way where we could kind of enforce that? So if you're going into a place where we're going to be using the mount, the antenna mount, however, there's an existing abandoned, broken, whatever, non, device that's not in service, how do we remove that? And if we could basically push that cost to the applicant to remove in lieu of the township?
So this is a tough question, and it's one that a lot of municipalities have. Effectively, we can only require applicants and owners to remove their own equipment. The reason is, is one, that they're incredibly hesitant to touch anyone else's equipment, just from a legal perspective. It's difficult for, say, Verizon to determine if Comcast has abandoned their equipment, just from a practical perspective, as well as from a legal perspective. So what I would recommend in terms of, and I think this is something that was discussed in Matt's comments as well, I know he's not at the meeting tonight, he had suggested that the township would be pursuing a sort of inventory or survey of assets that are currently deployed in the right of way and looking to determine who actually owns abandoned or unsightly equipment, and then pursuing having those entities remove the equipment themselves. So a long answer to a brief question, but ultimately, all we can require is that applicants remove their own abandoned or obsoleted equipment. We can't require them to remove someone else's equipment. That would be something that would fall either on the owner of that equipment or on the township itself if the owner is derelict.
Here's another idea, and again, I don't know if this is, if this would work or not, but every, as part of the application fee, every applicant will need to pay, you know, an application fee, maybe a little bit additional money. That additional money would be set aside in a, call it, an abandoned antenna fund or vehicle. Monies would be held aside by the township, of which any abandoned equipment would be pulled down from that fund to pay for removing the equipment. Obviously, as you had said, if you have some equipment, no one wants to touch it for legal reasons, which I respect, and obviously, what's going to end up happening is going to be fall on the responsibility of the township, because everyone wants to remove equipment that's not in use, very unsightly, and, you know, could be a potential liability. So if we have this fund, better lack of words, and we draw down monies on that to basically go up on the roof or go up on the antenna or whatever, get the tools out, remove it, and throw it out. Is that possible?
It is possible to an extent. And the reason I say to an extent is that small wireless communications facility application fees, so facilities in the rights of way, they are effectively set in stone by federal and state law. Other application fees, non-tower wireless communications facilities and tower-based wireless communications facilities, so rooftop antennas, cell towers, antennas on water tanks, those we have more of an ability to change or increase the application fee themselves to bake in the sort of additional costs. The application fees for small wireless communications facilities, though, are set now by both the FCC's 2018 order, as well as Pennsylvania's new Act 50. So we don't really have any ability to change those fees. The only small wireless communication facility fee that we would have some latitude to change would be the right-of-way use fee. And changing that, and when I say changing, I mean going above the $270 per site per year that we currently charge, would have to be done via a formal cost. So we'd have to assess the entirety of the township's costs that could go into managing the facilities in the rights of way, wireless facilities specifically in the rights of way, and determine that the cost for each individual facility is greater than $270 per site per year. So again, a long answer to a short question, but the small wireless communication facilities fees are very, very difficult to exceed. They're called fee ceilings, and the law kind of, you know, like I said, sets those in stone. But it's something that we could potentially pursue via the non-tower and tower-based fees.
Well, yeah, I would, I think it'd be a great idea if we could insert, at least with what you're addressing right now, in the ordinance to give the township or to give the board some greater flexibility when we recommend this ordinance to them. Any questions?
Mike, I had two additional comments. One was just a clarification on an edit I had mentioned to you previously, was to section 280-164 sub J. It's the provision dealing with historic buildings. And I believe that the words "or" on A should be removed to allow the clause to read "property building or structure" that is listed. That's one. The second comment goes to what David was referencing previously, as far as the identification of one of these facilities. So here's the question. If there's a location that has three of the same types of equipment sitting there, how do we know which one belongs to which owner applicant?
So they would be required to tag their equipment effectively. So that goes to the FCC required signage and the signage for contact information in the event of an emergency. So we require that signage under the ordinance itself. We can, I can expand that to clarify that they have to tag every piece of equipment associated with the facility. That would avoid any instances where they say "tag" in the cabinet, but not the antenna itself. That's something that we can expand. But they are required to place signage on their equipment showing who the owner is.
So just kind of melding that with what David was saying is, we want to be able to identify the owner of each piece of equipment, but we don't want it to be, quote, "tagged" in a way that it becomes like a little mini billboard?
Yeah. So the signage that we would require would be, and I realize I'm probably either very small or very large on your screen, but would be a smaller kind of metal plate sign that identifies, you know, name, company, contact information. So we can set maximum dimensions of that signage. It's also something that the township would have discretion in. As part of the application itself, you have, say, as to what that signage actually looks like. But it certainly would not be something that would be, you know, an advertisement-sized sign. It would simply be a contact information placard effectively.
So I would just ask that you make that change. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Mike, I had a question. When we talk about, we're unable to compel a new installer to remove their equipment, I'm just thinking, between AT&amp;T, Comcast, and Verizon, haven't we covered probably 80 or 90% of the equipment that's dangling from the pole right now? And would the ordinance be construed to differentiate between Verizon Wireless and Verizon Cable Optic? In other words, could you ask that Verizon remove any derelict Verizon equipment that it encounters, and shouldn't they know what their equipment looks like, et cetera?
Yeah. So a good question and worthy of a distinction as well. The entities that will be covered by this specific ordinance will be Verizon Wireless, T-Mobile, and AT&amp;T. Comcast will not fall under this. They don't put up this equipment right now. They only put up really cable strand and micro wireless facilities, which don't fall under this. What we have found is that the majority of, say, excess cabling, you know, spools of cable on utility poles hanging down, those are most frequently left by the, either the cable providers. So it sounds like Comcast in the township's case, electric utilities or telephone utilities. And the reason being is that they leave excess pool of cable in order to run it to houses in the future. That is, a lot of the instances we see of excess cable like that is for that very purpose. And it's kind of a practical thing that these companies do to save themselves time in the future. So what we could require removal of under this ordinance would be cable related to wireless facilities, antennas related to wireless facilities, accessory equipment, so cabinets with additional equipment inside of them. But it would have to be equipment owned and operated by the wireless providers themselves, AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, or Verizon, or the wireless contractors. And there are a few more of those, Crown Castle, Mobility, Xnet are the big ones. In terms of having Verizon Wireless remove Verizon Cable or Verizon Telephone equipment, likely something that wouldn't be able to be done as well. Those are separate entities for legal purposes. They don't have a lot of interplay between the two. So it would be something that removal of Verizon Telephone equipment, for example, would have to be done by Verizon Telephone, the company, rather than Verizon Wireless, which is a separate entity.
But is there any way, as any of these companies, as they present in their application, where obviously, if you have Verizon, and you have obviously different entities among Verizon that you're just alluding to, where, okay, they may not remove it, but would they allow the township permission to remove the antiquated equipment? Because now, my rationale from my statement is that this would be the only time where we have, we as a township would have leverage over Verizon, no matter what the entity is, to get with what we need to be done. And by going back to my other concept, if we have some money set aside to remove the equipment, we allow, you know, the applicant to do all the, to do all their internal approvals to get, you know, the abandoned equipment removed, et cetera, get all the permitting, et cetera, on their end, let them deal with Verizon Wireless to, you know, Verizon itself, the other entities, let's put the onus on them.
Yeah. So again, unfortunately, it's not something that would be a legally tenable position to take. Effectively, Verizon Wireless and Verizon, they're called Wireline, would be the Verizon Telephone or Cable, are equivalent to Verizon and AT&amp;T for purposes of regulation under this ordinance. So it wouldn't be something that we would be able to tie, you know, rejection or placing a moratorium on submission of their applications to Verizon Wireline's conduct in the right of way. It's effectively just a separate entity. It would be something that Verizon Wireless would be able to effectively sue the township over, and they would have a strong case to win, because they are simply for purposes of regulation, not Verizon Wireline. I realize this is an odd distinction, but the way they are structured as a corporation is that these are effectively two completely different companies that are not interrelated in any way for regulation of wireless facilities.
Okay, thank you very much. Do we have any other comments or questions for Mike before we open it up to?
Well, so, Mr. Vice Chair, just remember, this is not an actual meeting.
Okay.
This is more of a conversation at this point, right? There's, I just want to make that distinction be known. So there is no public comment, per se, because we don't have a formal meeting going on right now. So this has been more of a discussion with special counsel.
But can we recognize that there is someone in the audience, if they have any discussions? It's, that person may be?
I would suggest that public comment be held for Board of Commissioners at this point, which is going to be the next, which will be the official meeting for this.
Perfect. Okay. Just want to just acknowledge, acknowledge that. So in lieu of the fact that we do not, oh, actually, before I say that, Mike, thank you very much again for your time, your counsel, your patience, for answering all of our questions and comments. One thing that I would like to ask of you is that if you could kind of incorporate our comments that we discussed this evening into your next draft that you will present to the Board of Commissioners, that would be helpful.
Absolutely. And thank you all for your input.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. So in lieu of the fact that we do not have a quorum this evening, it's our recommendation that this ordinance is presented to the Board of Commissioners for their review, approval, and adoption.
There's no vote, so, yeah.
I'm looking for acknowledgement from you.
Yes, sir. And I will make that known in a memorandum. And I will make that known in a memorandum to the board that at this conversational meeting, that was the outcome.
For what it's worth, I agree with that, as we further refined it here tonight.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mike.
Gentlemen, thank you. Thank you, Mike, Steve, thank you. Thank you for coming. We're going to conclude this special meeting to discuss the wireless ordinance. Everyone have a nice evening and enjoy the rest of your summer. Thank you.